We have a quorum. Chet Stensel is ill and unable to be here tonight. I'm asking for a motion to elect Charlie Baker as moderator. Okay. Charlie had been moderated for over 25 years prior to Chet being elected. So, thank you for the motion. And who seconded it? Thank you. So, at this point, I would administer the oath of office to Charlie.
You said maybe let them vote. Should they vote?
They made a motion.
Shouldn't they vote?
They made a motion, so we're...
Just a vote. They vote yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we have... Sorry. You have it?
Okay. So, now...
By hand, by hand. By hand is enough.
Now, we're going to do this. Okay, the voting has begun. All right. Charlie?
Yeah. Come here.
Do you, Charlie Baker, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and passionately perform on you, coming upon you, as moderator in accordance to the Town of Auburn charter, the Town of Auburn bylaws, the laws of common law?
I go.
Thank you. It is passed. Charlie will moderate the meeting.
Good evening, all. The first thing we want to do is do the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over near where you came in. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the liberty of justice for all. And as we normally do at the annual town meeting, I will read the names of those who were former town meeting members who have passed on during the last year. And at the end of it, I'll ask people to stand for a moment of silence. So, James W. Creelman, town meeting member, precinct five. John S. Watson, town meeting member, precinct three. Paul R. Alstrom, town meeting member, precinct two. Barbara Granger, town meeting member, precinct three. Charles E. McMillan, town meeting member, precinct two, precinct three, and precinct five. John S. Campbell, town meeting member, precinct one. Stephen L. Copeland, town meeting member, precinct three. John R. Anderson, town meeting member, precinct four. Shirley L. Kemp, town meeting member, precinct four. Bruce C. Macquarie, town meeting member, precincts four and five. Jack Arroyo, town meeting member, precinct five. Robert C. Johnson, town meeting member, precinct four. Stephen K. Fant, town meeting member, precinct two. And the brave people of Ukraine, please stand. Thank you. Article one. To hear the reports. Oh, I'm sorry. Those things I have to remind you. Okay. I see it now, the reminder list. Is this it? Okay, fine. These are the reminders.
No, that's just because if anybody doesn't...
So, as for the first order of business, I have examined the warrant and the constable's return of service and asked to waive the reading of the warrant. We will be electronically voting tonight, which will register the votes quickly and accurately during the meeting. We want to remind any town meeting members to turn off any Wi-Fi hotspots. When the voting starts, the green light will go on. The light will be off when it has ended, and it will be announced when it has ended. During that time, you will be able to press the green button for yes, press the red button for no. If you accidentally press the wrong button, you can change it during the voting period. If you decide you don't want to vote, do not press any button at all, or you can push the yellow button for abstain. Once the voting has ended, no votes will be allowed. Before we start, we will do a sample article to test to make sure they are all working properly, which I guess we did when we did the other... Excuse me, didn't we just do that?
We did because of the article.
Yeah, right, we did that. All articles will show as a pass or fail. The two third articles will fail if they do not meet the two-thirds requirement. If passed, they will be declared that they passed. If you need to leave the meeting temporarily, keep your handset with you. Do not give it to anyone to hold or leave it on your seat. If you need to leave the meeting completely, please place the handset in the labeled box at the table before leaving the auditorium at the check-in desk. Roberta Baker, well, Bobby, actually, has offered to read all the motions tonight. Please have cell phones silenced on or off. I mean, off. If you wish to address this meeting, you must do so only after you've been recognized. Please stand then come forward to the microphone and identify yourself. Please identify yourself, that's what it is, by name and precinct for the record. If you were making a motion to second the article, please keep your hand up so we can see who seconds all motions. Thank you. Now... Going to Article one. Article one. To hear the report of the Finance Committee, other town offices, and committees or act on anything relative thereto. The Finance Committee, please.
Okay, good evening. Good evening. And thank you for your participation in the process of the House Budget Council for fiscal 2023, which you have before you now. I acknowledge the hard work of our committee, and I appreciate their fairness in the immediate budget process. The $76.289 million budget before you represents a $2.084 million or a 2.8% increase from the final 2022 budget. The notable increases in the operating budget include $3.2 million or 4.7% increase in employee benefits, and that includes within that an increase of $379,440 or 9.7% increase in the retirement plan. Increase in department operating budget of $881,674 or a 3.15% increase, and an increase in the DPW department of $230,640 or 4.15% increase. Now, according to the Governor's budget, the Town of Auburn can expect to receive a significant increase, 12.07% in state aid. Within that state aid received, the Chapter 70 school funding also increased or is planned to increase by 14.25%. As usual, these are preliminary numbers, and the state legislature will finalize these amounts within the next few months. Warrant articles before you tonight include various standard articles, annual articles, articles repurposing CIP funds for work at our schools, the request for funds to replace the DPW roof, and a request for funds to continue the refurbishment of Camp Gleason. Regarding the warrant articles, the Finance Committee takes the following positions. Articles two to 33 voted yes. Articles 34, 35, 36 defer to petitioner. Respectfully submitted, Ann Kavanaugh, Chair; Kevin Kennedy, Vice Chair; Edward Coleman, Trevor Sansucci; Michael Marshall; Diane Byrne; and Patrick Jones.
Thank you. Yes. The Board?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. As you all know, I'm very long-winded with this, so I hope you're comfortable. I'm joined with Vice Chair Scott Ren, fellow Board Member Sarah Ruffley, and hiding in the back there, Mr. Berthew. The Board, by a majority vote, has recommended that town meeting approve Articles one through 35. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other committees that wish to report? Seeing none, we will then go to Article two. Bobby?
Article two. I move that the town meeting vote to fix the salary and compensation of elected town officers for FY 2023 as follows. Town moderator, $296. Selectman, chairman, $1,740. Selectman, four, $6,097. And the town clerk, $83,000.
Do I have a second? Are there any questions on Article two? Seeing none... Okay, it's going to take a minute to do something electronically. Then we can vote.
We just have to switch because one wasn't loaded.
This is what happens once you have electricity, I guess. Yeah. We're having a small problem up here electronically. So, would everybody in favor of Article two please signify so by raising their hands? Thank you. And all those opposed, Article two has been voted. Article three. Bobby?
Article three. I move that the town meeting raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or otherwise provide for and appropriate to pay town debts and charges for the ensuing year. Several sums of money in the proposed budget as stated in the Recommendation of Finance columns on pages 21 through 65, inclusive of the Town Auburn FY 2023 budget and annual town meeting warrant totaling $72,025,491. And to raise said sum by transferring from available funds, $15,000 from cemetery lots and graves, $25,000 from the pension reserve, $3,000 from Wetlands Fund, $27,071 reserved for appropriation dog licenses, $50,000 reserved for appropriation casella host agreement, $1,075,000 from reserve for appropriation ambulance, $20,000 from overflow trash bags, $63,248.0 from high school, middle school debt reserve, $12,500 from perpetual care, and by raising and appropriating or otherwise providing for the balance of said funds. Each total amount is printed in the Recommendation Finance Committee column of the 2022-2023 budget to be considered a specified departmental appropriation, and further that the Finance Committee is authorized to transfer between the individual accounts which total any specific appropriation when requested by the department and the committee... When requested, I'm sorry. When requested by a department and the committee feels such transfer is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Kasnovich?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, town meeting members. Before I get into the specifics on Article three and four, as this presentation addresses and also addresses any other funding articles that are before you tonight, I'm just waiting for the presentation to show up on the screen behind me. Okay, before you or behind me is tonight's recommendation for the FY 23 operating budget under Article three and Article four. The recommendation provides for total appropriations of $76,289,550.49 with an equal amount of revenue providing for a balanced budget. The recommendation taxes at a level of 1.23% out of the possible 2.5. That's roughly 49.34, just slightly under the allowable 2.5 level of taxation as allowed under the law. As we can see, we're looking at a comparison between FY 22 and 23. The estimated receipts are up just under 4%, 3.99. Cherry sheet revenue, we got some encouraging news under the Governor's recommendation, realizing about a $1.8 million gain or a 12.07% increase. Tax levy, including new growth, is at a 2.51% increase. That's a little misleading because new growth is not calculated as a component of 2.5. Debt exclusion, we actually have a reduction of $54,000 or roughly just shy of 2%. And available funds, we have a reduction over the current fiscal year of $1,149,000 and change. It's about a 34.34% reduction. As we look at our total revenue appropriations, it's up $2,836,7321 or a 2.81% increase. When we break down our revenue components, we look at our tax levy revenue, we're estimated to raise $43,922,716. Once again, that's a utilization of $625,671 out of a 2.5% growth factor, which is roughly just under 1.2 million. So, that utilizes 49.34% of 2.5. We're currently using a conservative value for new growth of $450,000. The new growth average over the last five years has been $730,798. The budget since 2012 utilizes 1/10 of allowable 2.5 for our five-year capital program. It's about $126,810. And the FY 23 budget raises $2,777,757 outside of the normal levy to continue to fund our debt and interest that was voted by you, the voters of this community, for a debt exclusion vote for the construction costs of the Auburn High School and the Auburn Middle School. Here's a graph of our five-year growth, ranging from a low of $610,000 to a high of $931,000 in FY '20. When you blend that all together, our five-year average is $730,798. When we look at taxation, we're taxing at a level of 83.75 out of a potential 100%. That allows us to build up our excess levy to a level of about $8.5 million or about a 16.25% of unutilized tax levy. When we look at our excess levy history, and this is something that we show our town meeting members every year, as you can see, from FY '12 to FY '22, on the left side of the graph, you can see the level of taxation every year. We haven't taxed close to 2.5 over that 10-year period. Because we're not taxing to the full extent of 2.5, we're building up excess levy. That's money that the community can tax at any time without asking for a 2.5 override. By not taxing to 2.5, the 12-year savings to the residents and the taxpayers of our community is just shy of $50 million. That's something we're proud to identify to the town. We are anticipating, through the Governor's recommendation, a cherry sheet state aid total The total cherry sheet revenue increase over the current fiscal '22 is $1,801,944 or one-year increase of 12.7%. 2.70% is coming by way of unrestricted local aid in the amount of $50,820, with an additional amount of $1.750 million coming in the form of Chapter 70 or a 14.25% increase over the current fiscal year. The House budget number estimates were released on April 14th. We can tell you that net revenue over assessments resulted in a net gain to the town of only Right now, we're going with the conservative of the two figures, and that's the Governor's estimates. Here are the cherry sheet estimates, as actually published and distributed to us by the Department of Revenue. Here are all the receipts, and as you can see, it shows in the first column, 22, cherry sheet estimates and the Governor's estimates in the far-right-hand column. When we look at the cherry estimates under the Governor's proposed budget, we're looking at assessments of $756,022. The total cherry sheet estimates are up over the current fiscal year by about 11.56% or $78,349. The primary reason for the increase is the increase in regional transportation assessment. It's up $101,086. Once again, here's the estimates as provided by the Department of Revenue. Once again, in the first column, FY '22, far-right-hand column, FY '23, showing a total of $756,022. When we look at our available funds, we are recommending a funding source of $2,196,957. Some of the key components under that is ambulance proceeds is providing $1.584 million as an offset to the fire department operating cost, as well as a capital expense for the ambulance and the five-year CIP, and two warrant articles that are being requested tonight. It provides for soar retained earnings to offset capital needs in the amount of $315,000. It also provides for retained earnings under ACTV for capital enhancements of $20,000. And it also provides for a debt exclusion offset. This is a reserve as a result of interest at our premium we earned on borrowing funds for the construction, for the debt exclusion for the middle school of $63,200. When we look at our local receipts, we're estimating a total revenue of $10,657,772. That's an increase of about $409,000 over the current fiscal year or a 3.99% increase. We made some post-COVID adjustments in the areas of hotel and motel tax revenue, which we saw a major decline in year one of COVID because there was limited activity or limited occupancy in our hotels. People were not going out to eat, and we saw a reduction in our meal tax as well. There's a trash increase fee that took place in the current fiscal year that's going to yield a revenue increase of about $110,000. That's going to cover all direct and indirect costs associated with trash collection, recycling, and disposal under the terms of the new contract. We are anticipating a reduction in our investment income amounting to about $20,000. We saw a reduction in actuals in the current fiscal year. And all of the departmental and local receipts are level funded at this time. We will update those at the end of the fiscal year and provide an update at the fall town meeting. When we look at a breakdown of revenue by component, we can see tax levy is providing about 57.57% of our total revenue. Our cherry sheet state aid, just under $17 million, is providing roughly 22% of our total revenue. Local receipts at $10.6 million is providing about 14% of our total revenue. Available funds at roughly $2.2 million, about 2.88%, and our debt exclusion of about $2.77 million provides for about 3.64% of total revenue. When we look at our total revenue sources, it's combined total of $76,289,550.49. That's a $2.83 million increase over the current fiscal year or a 2.84% increase over current year level. When we look at the expense side of the budget, the next two pages, and this is provided in your town meeting warrant, so I'm not going to focus too much on this because it's already in your book, but as you can see, the FY projected amounts are those that are being recommended, and that will be read by the moderator shortly after this presentation. Highlights of the '23 budget on the expense side. It provides a sum of money to meet anticipated salary and wage increases that we're currently negotiating with night of our unions. The budget recommendation provides for the following positions. It creates a deputy police chief position with a start date of 1/1/23. It provides for two school licensed practical nurses. It provides for a .6 FTE school strings teacher. It provides for a Packard Char golf club manager funded solely through the enterprise fund through golf proceeds. It provides for a fighting department clerk with a start date of 4/1/2023. And it provides for two stipend golf coaches at the Auburn School Department. It increases group health by 4.9% or a total increase of about $400,000. It increases our Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment by $379,000 with a 9.59% increase and actually takes advantage of a savings of $78,862 if we pay the assessment on 7/1/2022. And we've done that in the past several years. It increases our Medicare to meet our 1.45% match as an employer obligation. It meets all of our long-term debt and interest obligations for existing bond issues. The budget assumes that we're going to go out for a ban in November of 2022. That's a short-term borrowing to meet our capital improvement obligations. to meet our capital improvement obligations for any authorizations that may be approved by town meeting. The budget provides for all costs associated with the debt and interest payment for the debt exclusion cost for the Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School. And once again, I just want to remind our town meeting members that high school debt, on the high school, the debt exclusion is going to be retired in FY2024. So we're getting very close to retiring that debt. Increased Bay Path assessment is $240,700. That's primarily driven by an increase in student enrollment from '99 to 118. That's a 19th student increase over the current fiscal year. Motor vehicle fuel was based on a purchase price when we put the budget together of $3.30. We can all relate to what we're paying now for gas. In most cases, it's still over $4 per gallon. This may most definitely require a reconsideration or a supplemental vote at the fall town meeting. There is no current appropriation request for stabilization or OPEB in this budget before you begin. On the expense side, the governors, the cherry sheet charges and assessments are using the governor's estimates. Our budget for the 10th year in a row uses our adopted financial policies that continues to lead to financial stability for the town. The budget includes a capital improvement plan under Article IV of $2.861 million. It relies on $725,000 of bond proceeds as a revenue source to fund that request. Here's a summary of what you'll be asked to consider under Article IV. Here are all the various funding sources totaling $2,861,469. As we look at how we break down our expense by a function of government, as you can see, education is the largest share, totaling just under 40%. And 40% represents direct appropriation. It does not account for indirect costs. Typically, when we do an indirect cost calculation on top of direct, it's going to be somewhere close to 60% total cost for educational purposes. Employee benefits make up about 17.78%. Public safety, about 11.46%. Debt and interest, 7.04%. Public works, 8.81%. General government, 5.89%. Assessments, offsets, overlay, CIP, and articles represent about 5.59%. Solid waste, about 1.7%. Public services, about 1.51%. And inspectional and economic development services, just about 1%. In summary, we're looking at total appropriations of equal to revenue of $76,289,550.49. It's an increase of $2,836,732, or a 2.84% increase. We look at total appropriations over total revenue. We have a balanced budget, and as a result of the recommendation, it leaves about $642,435,000 of underutilized levy that we would be allowed to tax under Prop. 2.5. One thing I would like to identify, we're taxing at a rate of 1.23. And I know every time we come to town meeting, when we get to the fall town meeting, we manage to dilute that or water that down. I can tell you, last year when we came to town meeting, I think the level of taxation was just over 2%, like 2.9%. We managed to get that down to about 1.22%, almost a full 1% reduction. We're going to continue to minimize the level of taxation as best we can, and hopefully, we can bring you some good news in the fall and get it below what we're presenting tonight. I just want to go back. I just want to put town meeting members on notice. I think we're all concerned about what inflationary concerns can do to many of our operating budgets. And so I think as a result of the following items, we may have to revisit this at some point and make some corrections to the budget. I think we did increase our reserve accounts. That gives us more financial flexibility to address some of these potential shortfalls. But in the event that's not adequate, we may have to come back and reconsider the following line items. Motor vehicle fuel, including diesel. Utility costs that would include electricity and natural gas. Our fleet maintenance, we noticed an uptick on motor vehicle supply and repair costs. Capital acquisition costs, that being short-term interest that we may be paying to purchase our capital items, as well as long-term debt costs. They're definitely on the rise. And our solid waste recycling and fuel adjustment costs, there is a provision in our current contract that allows for fuel escalation in the event that the fuel costs increase above a certain threshold. So with that, that is the conclusion of my presentation. And Mr. Moderator, I will now turn it back to you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. By the way, everybody, I noticed that Representative Paul Frost is here this evening. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to go and read from the finance side of pages 19, 20, and I guess 19, 20, and 21. If, as I read a figure, if you have a question about it, please say something like, "Hold." I will mark it, and after all the reading is done, then we will go back and see what's marked and do what has to be done. Okay, so Moderator, 296. Selectmen, $10,737. Office of Town Manager, $436,529. Finance Committee, $1,015. Reserve total, $670,000. Okay, thank you. Finance Department total, $8,588,475. Now going down. Lawyer total, $145,000. Human Resources, $82,572. Information Technology, $293,115. Town Clerk total, $201,273. Election total, $45,102. Town Hall total, $52,500. General Services total, $1,544,908. And the school total, $28,870,214. Police, $5,080,225. Fire, $3,641,407. Emergency Management, oh, manager, I guess it's manager, $17,500. Bay Path, $1,503,407. Norfolk Agricultural School, $45,512. DPW total, $6,239,152. Solid Waste total, $1,287,305. Development Inspection Services total, $754,159. All right. Appeals total, appeals total of $14,851. Department of Public Services, Pension, $13,566,218. And the bottom total, $72,025,491. And that's, I think, all I read. And so we have to go back to the reserve total, which was $670,000. And somebody had a question.
Ken Frost, Precinct 4. My question is, we went from, last year, from $60,000 to $420,000. I'm just wondering what the increase was for.
So, Mr. Frost, as part of my presentation, I indicated that we were currently, we currently provide the sum of money to meet our obligations that we're currently negotiating with the unions at the table. Those negotiations are ongoing, so they're not contained within the operating budget. They're contained within the salary and wage reserve account.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. The light, okay. I guess the electrics are working. I thought we were in candlelight here, actually. All right, everybody, it's time to vote. I need green. Yes, I got it. Takes me a while to read. Voting has stopped. And do we have the count? We will get it. Just a majority, anyway. And it was a majority?
Seventy-two.
Yeah. Oh, unanimous. That's even a better majority. Thank you all. Okay, Article IV. Now, Article IV, because it's got borrowing, is going to be, when we vote on it, is going to be a two-thirds vote. And could I now have the motion, please, on Article IV?
Article IV. I move that the town meeting approve the five-year capital improvement plan for the town manager, information technology, town clerk, planning, police, fire, engineering, fleet maintenance unit, highway, sewer, cemetery, senior center slash elder affairs, library, parks, Auburn Community Television, Packer Chaw Golf Course, and schools, as stated on pages 67 through 73 inclusive, of the Town of Auburn FY2023 budget and annual town meeting warrant. And further to approve an appropriation of $2,861,469 to fund the FY2023 capital improvement program as specified on pages 66 through 73, under the column entitled Finance Committee Recommendation, and to raise said funds by borrowing and appropriating the sum of $1,453,540 from general fund revenues, $30,000 from CIP expendable trust, $315,000 from sewer enterprise retained earnings, $20,000 from capital access enterprise retained earnings, $17,929 from dog license fees, and $300,000 from ambulance proceeds. I also move that the town meeting authorize the borrowing of $725,000 for a period of up to 10 years for the items as identified in the five-year capital improvement plan, and any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes. May be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. I further move that prior to purchase all over the town, oh, sorry. I further move that prior to purchase all over-the-road vehicles shall be marked on both front panels as property of the Town of Auburn for official use only, and have a permanently fixed town seal, and that the expenditure of funds so appropriated shall be under the direction of the Chief Procurement Officer of the town or school department.
Do I have a second? Do I have any questions? Seeing none. It's all the voting light is on. Thank you. So time to vote. Okay, voting light is off, and it's two-thirds. We have to, yes, we do. We have the two-thirds. Thank you. Okay, now, at the end of this warrant, when you received it in the mail, there were three zoning bylaws. And two of them are very complicated. They're long, you know, I'm not reading them. They're like 80 pages or whatever. And they're complicated. And rather than wait till the end of the meeting, when everybody's tired, it struck me that the best thing we could do would be to amend the agenda and take Articles 34 and 35 and 36 and do them right now before we do Article V. Do I have a motion on that, Bobby?
I move that we amend the agenda by moving Articles 34, 35, and 36 after Article IV and before Article V.
Do I have a second? I see hands on a second. Okay. So we start with Article 34. Oh, we have to vote to do the other one. Thank you. We have to vote to amend the agenda. All those in favor of amending the agenda, here we go. Is the lights on? Okay, we voted to amend the agenda. So we're starting off with Article number 34. And for those of you in your book, that's on page 77. I just checked that. I think I'm correct. And so, Bobby, do we have a motion on Article 34?
Sorry. So Article 34. I move that the town meeting vote to approve an amendment to the town's registered marijuana bylaw as printed in the May 3, 2022 annual town meeting warrant.
Okay, is there a second? There are certainly a second. Are there any questions or statements or?
I don't know if there's no questions. I was just going to give a...
You want to, yeah, so fine, yeah. Thank you.
You do that.
I know you're a racist.
All right. So this was a proposal from the Board of Selectmen, brought to you tonight to amend the registered marijuana dispensary bylaws. the registered marijuana dispensary bylaws. As you probably already know, Auburn banned recreational marijuana in the ballot on 2017. But, under state law, we can't ban medical dispensaries. So, this only applies to the medical dispensaries in town, and if passed tonight, would allow them to set up shop for medical dispensaries in a few more locations in town than the bylaws previously allowed. We have zoning maps up here, if anyone wants to take a look, but that's just the general overview of it.
Thank you, Tristan. Doreen, I know, it's rather, I think we've got candlelight in here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Doreen Goodrich, Precinct 3. So, I stand to discuss this article, and I actually oppose this article. It's not for the purpose of opposing medical marijuana, it's for the purpose of opposing the expansion of our zoning bylaws. We've seen growth in Auburn from one end of Route 20 to the other, from the Worcester Line to the Oxford Line. I've heard people down at the Albert Street area talk about the growth there. We've had the increased growth on Washington Street at 190 and 50 Washington Street, and just seen an incredible amount of growth. We've tried, I've seen many residents try to have their voices heard at the planning board meetings, and the planning board's hands are tied because these are on state roads. This is our opportunity, as town meeting members, to defeat this zoning expansion, give town administration and the Board of Selectmen something to go to Mass DOT and say, hey, we can't even get a bylaw expanded in the Town of Auburn to include Route 20 because what we're hearing is the safety concerns, the traffic concerns, the road improvements that need to be done by Mass DOT in Auburn, and I think this is our opportunity to send a clear message to Mass DOT that we're looking for improvements in the Route 20 area before any further expansion. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Doreen. Are there any other statements or questions? Seeing none, and since this is a zoning bylaw, again, we have a two-thirds vote necessary. Yes, light on, please. Time to vote. Voting is over? And it failed. It failed. It did not get the two-thirds vote necessary to pass. Article 34 failed. And the next article is rather complicated, too, I think. And so, before we get to the article itself, and it's going to be all the zoning bylaws are two-thirds, I would request two things. Would people please limit their statements to no more than two minutes? And if somebody hears something said and agrees that, boy, I'd like to hear what Mrs. Smith said and Mr. Jones said, by all means, get up and say, I agree with Mr. Smith and Mr. Jones, and so, let's do it or not do it. And again, so that we don't spend hours and hours doing this. All right? So, we need Article 35.
Article 35. I move that the town meeting vote to amend Section 3.9.1.4 of the accessory use regulations, and to add Section 14 of the Auburn zoning bylaw, as printed in the May 3, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Is there a second? I see a second. I see a second. Okay. Are there any comments, questions?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Joe Martin, Precinct 2. First of all, I want to thank you all for this, because this is much improved from what we saw last fall. And I was also to support this until this afternoon, a resident of Precinct 4 I was speaking to, she's lived in town for about 60 years, she's had a miniature pig for about the last 10, she's very concerned about this. So, for that reason, I'd like to amend this article for miniature pig amendment. And the amendment, I know this is funny, but this is, she's very upset about this, and I completely understand this. You see, add miniature pigs and the definition of household pet. The new wording would be household pet, animals that are primarily kept indoors for non-agricultural purposes, including but not limited dogs, carrots, ferrets, miniature pigs, small rodent animals and birds, unless raised for commercial purposes, kept outdoors or kept in the accessory structure. The following animals shall not be considered household pets in the Town of Auburn, are wild and exotic animals, cattle, goats, sheep, swine, iguines, camalids, and poultry. The second would be to amend to strike the keeping of swine from 14.2.5. The new wording would be the operation of commercial raising, keeping of fur-bearing animals shall be prohibited on less than five acres of land. And the third would be amend 14.2.6 to read, no special permits shall be issued for a property of less than five acres of land for the operation of a pigery. The keeping of miniature pigs as household pets shall be allowable in all residential districts with an animal permit from the Board of Health and Animal Control.
Okay, now, if I may, sir, Joe Martin, so, you would need a second on your amendment. Is there a second on the amendment? Yes, I see a second. So, now, if you bring it up, please, the dev. And I did not see, and I should have. So, before we vote on this, Amy wishes to speak to the entire 35th article, and I didn't see her hand, and so, she's now going to talk, and then we will get to the vote on this.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, I'd like to jump in before we introduce Amy. I just, I just want to mention to town meeting members, who may or may not have been here in the fall, when, or might have missed a meeting when we were here in the fall, we did bring before you an animal bylaw in the fall, and there were a lot of questions, there were a lot of concerns, and there were a lot of confusion, quite honestly. So, we took the next several months, which is probably on top of the first two years that we spent putting this together, to weed through the comments, listen to what you've all said, speak to some town meeting members, and try to revise this bylaw so that it does what it has to do for us. And before I turn to Amy to explain this, I just, I have to make it really clear here, this is important. This is so critical. Amy's going to show you some of the calls that we take regarding animals, and we have very little ability to enforce some of the issues that are brought before us. We've gone to court over chickens because we don't have a bylaw that we can turn to to enforce something. We're not trying to be more restrictive, we're trying to help residents be able to have animals on their property in a legal mechanism, and Amy's going to go through all this. So, Amy's going to go through, why is this important? Why are we here? What does this do? And very importantly, what it does not do, because there's a lot of misinformation out there. I wanted to just remind everybody that this is not about an individual property owner, this is about the town as a whole, this is about quality of life for our residents. We have residents who have concerns with animals, and we have residents who want to have animals, and we're trying to find a fine balance that gives quality of life to both of those. There's a way to have animals on your property that's responsible, reasonable, and not obtrusive to your neighbors. And the neighbors, if the right bylaw is in place, it gives us the ability to work with those, those animal owners. So, please understand, we're imploring you to listen to this, understand that this is something that's been taking place for years. We don't want to waste taxpayer dollars, but we spend a lot of taxpayer dollars responding to calls, over which we have very little authority, and I think residents don't like it when we have to say, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do. So, that's why we're here tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Amy. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Yes, Julie, did you want to say something? I can't see anybody. I hate to tell you that. Whoever's there would love to see you.
Well, thank you. I would like to thank everyone tonight for your consideration of this bylaw. We have prepared a presentation that will hopefully explain what our intent is and go over some of the misinformation that we recognize has been out there, and even just a lack of maybe understanding of what our current bylaw is. And in the interest of trying, I will try to move through these slides quickly. So, currently, our zoning bylaws do not reflect recent cultural movements towards sustainable backyard farming. The proposed changes in front of you tonight will define and identify the differences between household pets and livestock and poultry, and then allowing us to regulate them separately. Currently, our zoning bylaws only make two references to the raising and keeping of animals within the town. In front of you on the screen is zoning bylaw 3914. So, this is the zoning bylaw in its entirety right now, which reads, "The keeping or raising of cats, dogs, or other pets, the breeding for sale of dogs, cats, or other pets, provided that not more than four such animals more than one year old shall be permitted. All animals shall be kept in a manner which will not create a public nuisance or potential hazard to human health, safety, welfare, or through the emission of objectable foul odors or excessive noise." In addition to that, Section 3.2 offers a definition for what commercial poultry or livestock is. It's defined as a parcel of land and building used in raising and selling poultry, poultry products, or livestock. In our Table of Principal Uses, we have commercial poultry or livestock farm and the raising of pets for gainful purposes, provided it's on a lot not greater than five acres. So, as you can see in the chart, it's allowable in every current zoning district but the residential mall district and Drury Square. So, because our current bylaws don't offer any definitions for what a pet is, all animals on residential property are included in the limit of four animals. So, that means, having unclear definitions, it includes every animal on the property, so your cats, your dogs, your hens, everything. The farming of poultry and livestock is only allowable for the current bylaw for commercial ventures on properties greater than five acres. The current bylaw does not address backyard farming or residents who wish to raise poultry or livestock for personal enjoyment or for non-commercial or non-income-based opportunities. The purpose of updating, the zoning bylaws have not been updated, the animal zoning bylaws have not been updated in almost 25 years, with some of the wording being as old as almost 35 years. The proposed change to 3914 will actually increase the number of allowable household pets per property. There may be separate licensing and permits that apply to that. It will set minimum standards for the keeping of poultry and livestock and regulate them separately from household pets. It will also help us mitigate complaints that we receive for nuisance odors and noise caused by agricultural animals in tight neighborhoods. Town administration responds to a myriad of poultry and livestock complaints right now on a continuous basis. This is just a brief example of complaints that come into various town offices. Roosters, chickens, there is a large section on chicken-based complaints, so the number of chickens, coops on property lines, owners using neighbors' fencing to contain their own chickens, odors, loose chickens, abandoned hens, abandoned roosters, increase in wildlife activity because of the keeping of poultry, livestock loose on major roadways, poultry flops loose on private business properties, goats kept under a pool deck, goats loose in a hotel, loose horses, livestock welfare concerns, manure feces smells in tight neighborhoods, animal slaughter in view of neighbors, beehives on property lines of people with allergies, illegal and dangerous exotic animals kept in homes. And again, this is just a brief sampling of some of the issues that come across town administration. One of the issues that we currently have with such a vague zoning bylaw is that it's very difficult for us to address these complaints. If there's not a reference in the bylaw, we can't enforce anything. So, when we get complaints for a neighbor's allowing their chickens to roam the neighborhood, there isn't a bylaw to support that owner has to contain their chickens. So, we get those calls on a continual basis and try to work with the owners, but we don't have a bylaw to fall back on for enforcement. In addressing these issues, utilize a broad spectrum of town and also outside resources. It's Animal Control, Board of Health, zoning, building, planning, police, fire, Town Manager's Office, Board of Selectmen, Town Council, include state resources, the environmental police, state police, the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, Worcester District Court and Worcester Housing Court. Legislation, sometimes we have to contact private animal welfare organizations for additional help. By creating a framework, these bylaws would help create a solution to many of the issues and reduce the number of resources currently required for a resolution. Additionally, there is required inspections and reporting for agricultural animals. In accordance with state law, under MGL Chapter 129, and under the direction of the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, all properties with agricultural animals are required to be annually inspected and reported to the state. In order for all of these properties to be inspected, the town must have a reporting, permitting, or licensing system in place for the properties to be identified. These inspections are required for emergency preparedness planning, biosecurity measures, and the identification of species susceptible to disease outbreaks. This information is required for disease traceability for both humans and animals. These are human health, there are human health concerns for living next to sick or improperly managed animals. And just as an example, we actually have a current animal order out issued by the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources for a highly pathogenic avian influenza, and that was just issued this month. So, what's happening in our surrounding areas? These proposed changes are in line with other municipalities and with best practice policies and procedures. For example, in Oxford, there's required licensing of six or less chickens and/or ducks on a property. A special permit is required if a resident has seven or more birds, or a totality of seven, any kind of animal on their property. That was just passed in 2001. In Leicester, no chickens are allowed on less than 7,000 square feet. The number of chickens allowed on lots greater than 7,000 square feet is dependent on the lot size, and their bylaw does not allow for more than 15 chickens on a property smaller than five acres, and that was enacted in 2018. Additionally, Auburn is not currently a right-to-farm town. We do not have an agricultural commission. The current zoning bylaws offer very little protections to owners or neighbors of those animal owners. As you can see, right here, Auburn, unfortunately, no ag commission and is not right to farm. So, one, I think part of the confusion has been, what is farming? So, what is commercial farming or income-based farming? Land that is primarily agricultural use for profit. Commercial agriculture, including aquaculture, civil culture, agriculture, floriculture, or viticulture, may be limited to parcels of five acres or more, or to parcels two acres, if the sale of products produced from the agricultural practice generates $1,000 per acre based on gross sale dollars. And this is reportable income to the IRS. What is backyard farming or hobby farming? That is small-scale farming that is primarily for personal pleasure or personal consumption instead of being a primary source of income. What are the proposed changes? Will this prohibit commercial or income farming in town? No. Our proposal doesn't affect commercial and income farming, which is still allowable by right in almost all zoning districts. How will this apply to backyard and hobby farming? Backyard and hobby farming currently is not allowed if there are more than four adult animals per property. The proposed zoning bylaw will make backyard farming and hobby farming allowable with frameworks in place for the considerations to neighborhood density. It will increase the number of cats and dogs allowed per property. It will regulate livestock and poultry separately from cats and dogs, and increase the total number of animals allowed per property. In the next few slides, I'll break down what the intent is of each section. So, for poultry, it will elicit the allowance of chickens expressly if the following conditions are met. The property must be at least 10,000 square feet, there will be 25-foot setbacks from dwellings, 20-foot setbacks from property lines, 100-foot setback from wells, 25-foot setback from all septic components, and no roosters on properties less than five acres. In the chart, you can see that if a property is equal or greater to 10,000 square feet In the chart, you can see that if a property is equal or greater to 10,000 square feet, they would be allowed by right six small poultry, so chickens, ducks, et cetera. No large poultry. But on a property equal or greater to one acre, they could have up to 12 small poultry, up to four large poultry, for a total, grand total of 12. For livestock, it regulates livestock separately from household pets and poultry. The keeping of livestock would be allowable on properties greater than five acres. Backyard or hobby farmers would be able to apply for a special permit if they have greater than one acre but less than five acres of land and want to keep and/or raise livestock. As similar setbacks to the poultry section of 25-foot setbacks from dwellings, 20 from property lines, 100 from wells, and 25 from all septic components. The section on beekeeping, I would like to note that this proposed bylaw mirrors the recommendations of the Massachusetts Beekeepers Association's Best Practice Manual. So all of the information here, the number of hives based on the property size and the recommendations of keeping hives away from any public and/or private rights-of-way, access easement, schools, or public parks, in addition to hives not exceeding five feet in height and 20 cubic feet, comes directly from the Beekeepers' Best Practices. Household pets, this creates a permitting process for residents who routinely breed animals classified as household pets, including but not limited to cats, dogs, ferrets, small rodents, et cetera. It prohibits the raising and keeping of household pets outdoors for the purpose of breeding and/or selling. Any structures that may house animals must comply with the following criteria, and again, similar language for the setback requirements. 25 feet from a dwelling, 20 from a property line, 100 from wells, and 25 from septic components. How may this affect residents? It addresses the most common complaints received by Animal Control, the Board of Health, and the Zoning Department regarding poultry and livestock. This will allow more residents to legally raise chickens. And 78% of all parcels in town are at least 10,000 square feet or larger, meeting the minimum size lot requirement for small poultry. And just an example on here, this is actually a 10,000-square-foot property lot in town with the 25-foot setback from a dwelling, 20-foot setback from a property line. So there is still room on the property for a resident to have a coop and have their six chickens. So in accordance with current zoning bylaws, only a total of four animals are allowed per property. So these are just examples. So that means a total, complete total of four animals. So if you have two cats and three dogs, it's currently not allowed. If you have a dog, three cats and chickens, it's not allowed. So all of the above combinations are currently illegal without a special permit. With our proposed changes, it increases the allowance of animals that are allowed per property. So everything you saw on the previous slide that's not currently allowed is allowable in our new proposal. There may be restrictions based on lot sizes and setbacks. So we do recognize that there have been a lot of questions regarding the information. It's a long bylaw. On the next few slides, we'll go over some of the questions that we've heard from town meeting members that we want to address. Since special town meeting in October, modifications have been made based on the comments we heard at town meeting. Some wording has been eliminated and simplified. Several public hearings have been held to get public feedback on the proposal. The town recognizes that there have been significant discussion on the topic of grandfathering, which required further discussion with town council regarding the legality of the matter. Grandfathering would have to be approached separately for the structures to house animals and the animals themselves. And again, it's not an easy concept for grandfathering in this situation. It has multiple levels to everything. So to go by it piece by piece, we have the structure to house animals. And, and again, this is in reference to grandfathering. So the structure that the animals live in. Was the structure lawfully constructed? Yes. Does it meet current setbacks? Yes. Then the structure may be grandfathered. You can kind of follow the flow chart to see the different answers. So was it lawfully constructed? Yes. Does it meet the current setbacks? Maybe it doesn't. Has it existed on the property for more than 10 years? And then we get into additional grandfathering. If it has existed on a property for more than 10 years, the structure may be grandfathered. If it hasn't, then it may be considered on a case-by-case basis. Again, this is the physical structure that the animals may live in. So if there was a barn constructed on a property previous to the possible passing of this bylaw, if there was a coop, if there are other fences, this is a framework for possible grandfathering of those structures. And then animals. So to follow the flow chart, do you currently have the legal allowable number of four animals or less per, on your property? If you do, then there's no need for grandfathering, and you can actually own additional animals if this bylaw is passed. If you currently don't have the allowable legal limit, do you have more than four animals? Yes. Does your number of animals meet the increased number of allowable animals in the proposed bylaw? And again, the proposed bylaw regulates cats and dogs separately, so up to six cats and dogs, and then additionally, four chickens and livestock. So if it does, there's no need for grandfathering. If you have more than four animals and more than the number of animals that are being proposed in the bylaw, have you continuously kept more than four animals on your property predating the existing zoning bylaw 3914? Yes. Grandfathering would be determined on a case-by-case basis. If no, there is a special permit process for residents to keep their animals. Will this take away my rights? No. Backyard and hobby farming with poultry and livestock is not currently allowed if residents have more than four animals. This proposal will allow backyard and hobby farming with consideration to lot sizes and setbacks in a mainly suburban municipality. Only commercial and income farmers have rights or protections under MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3. However, this MGL does not offer any protections or any right to farms for backyard and hobby farmers. Will this prevent the operation of commercial farms in town? No. Commercial farms can still operate by right and under MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3. Will this encourage roosters in town? No. Roosters will not be allowed on properties less than five acres. And roosters are not required for hens to lay eggs. Will this promote agriculture in town? Yes. This will allow residents on reasonably sized lots the opportunity to engage in more backyard farming activities. The focus of this bylaw is on residential farming activities, not commercial farming. Commercial farming is still allowed by right and under certain exemptions under the MGL. And additionally, this has no effect on the privately owned Chapter 61A parcels in town that are registered and classified primarily as agricultural use. Will this encourage pet store operations that have shown to be problematic in other towns? No. Pet stores that sell imported animals are licensed and regulated by the state and do not fall under the jurisdiction of this bylaw. However, this proposal will discourage the inhumane and unethical breeding of animals within town, which has been an issue that the town has had to address over the years through complaints. Why do we care about the proximity of animals to private drinking wells? Runoff from animal waste can contaminate potable water. This could be the animal owner's well or the well of a neighboring property, depending on conditions such as distance, topography, aquifers, et cetera. This could lead to contamination from animal-borne pathogens, including E. coli, Listeria, and Salmonella. Why has the town not ordered the removal of animals if someone is over the four-animal limit or if someone is engaging in farming practices that are not in compliance with current zoning bylaws? Town administration recognizes the recent shift towards sustainability and backyard farming movement. This proposed bylaw has been several years in the making with the intent to make backyard farming an option for residents. Over the years, the intent to make backyard farming allowable has been taken into consideration by town departments, so the objective has not been to force the removal of welfare for animals from properties. However, with a population of almost 17,000 people in just over 16 square miles and no agriculturally-zoned districts in town, not every property can support poultry and/or livestock while taking the rest of the neighborhood and animals' welfare into consideration. So what happens if the zoning bylaws are not updated? By not updating the current bylaws, the only recourse town administration has when valid complaints are filed is to enforce the current zoning bylaw restriction, which limits residents to four animals per property. This proposal offers protections to both residents who have poultry and livestock or other animal operations on their property, and those do not. It also creates an outline for minimum standards of care for animals to prevent what could be catastrophic animal welfare issues. The proposal was created to help bring positive change to the community as a whole. I'd like to thank everybody for your time, and I'll turn it back over to our moderator.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Julie. Appreciate it. All right, so we are on to Mr. Martin's amendment, and it's been a bit since you heard it last, so I'm going to read it for you. Proposed miniature pig amendment. Number one amendment. Add miniature pig in the definition of household pet. New wording, household pet. Animals that are primarily kept indoors for non-agricultural purposes, including but not limited to dogs, cats, ferrets, miniature pigs, small rodent animals, and birds, unless raised for commercial purpose. Kept outdoors or kept in an accessory structure. The following animals shall not be considered household pets in the town of Auburn. All wild and exotic animals, cattle, goats, sheep, swine, equines, camelids, and poultry. Two, amend to strike the keeping of swine from 14.25. New wording to be 14.25. The operation of commercial raising or keeping of fur-bearing animals shall be prohibited on less than five acres of land. Three, amend 14.26 to read. 14.26. No special permit shall be issued for a property of less than five acres of land for the operation of a piggery. The keeping of miniature pigs as household pets shall be allowed in all residential districts within the animal permit, the animal permit from the Board of Health and/or Animal Control. And that was seconded. So we are now, it's up for discussion and a vote, and it's an amendment. It doesn't require a two-thirds vote. Yes, Craig? Yes, oh yeah. Yes.
Greg Bowling, Precinct 4. My, my question is really a recommendation that we do not approve this amendment. The concern I have was over the 14.2.5 change, which eliminates the keeping of swine, which would then therefore allow somebody on a lot smaller than five acres to actually have full-blown hogs. So my recommendation is that we vote against the amendment and then come back at the next town meeting with an adjusted bylaw, just to correct the language around miniature pig as a pet. My reading of the definition for household pet does also say not limited to. So in that case, it would be up to, I guess, town administration to decide if miniature pig counted as a household pet. I would assume that that would be true. It's an animal that's typically kept indoors would meet all the other criteria, I would believe. So that is just my suggestion on this, to keep this moving along and to get this very important bylaw changed in the books, which we can always go back and modify further if we need to. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Yes, I see a hand. Against this amendment, is that correct, Craig? Against the amendment, is what he's saying. Yes, I see ya. Yes.
Ellen E. here, Precinct 5. I have to tell you that when I was reading the definitions, I was really insulted when you put in here that in the town of Auburn, all wild animals, exotic, all wild and exotic animals, cattle, goats, sheep, swine, equines, camelids, and poultry would not be considered pets. I just really had a hard time with the fact that you were telling us what we could have for a pet and what we could not have for a pet. Just like the lady who has her small pig as a pet, why couldn't I have a sheep for a pet? Maybe once a year, I cut the wool off that sheep. I process that wool. I knit hats and mittens, donate it to the homeless shelter. That's my pet. But you tell me I can't have that sheep. I, I have a real problem with that. And as I was listening to other things, and you, if I can digress a little here, when you went on about backyard farming, I've had a vegetable garden since I was a kid. I've never called it backyard farming. I called it my vegetable garden. I don't sell anything. I give it away. And now we have to have rules and regulations about backyard farming?
Excuse me, Ellen, are you talking about this amendment or are you talking about the whole?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I know I digressed. But on the amendment part, I really have an issue with what you call a pet and what we don't call pet here in the town of Auburn.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other hands raised? Somebody? Thank you.
Just during Goodrich, Precinct 3. Just to Mr. Bowling's point, I'd like to hear from the Animal Control Officer whether that clause that he mentioned and other would cover a miniature pig as a pet.
Sure, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody, I think we're ready. Oh, I'm sorry, Amy.
Thank you. To answer your question regarding the comments on miniature pigs, so there is wording in place in the proposed bylaw that would put measures in place to separately regulate a household miniature pig versus a 600-pound meat pig in somebody's yard. We do understand that that could cause issues for residents. In the livestock regulation section on 14.2.2, the keeping of livestock on less than one acre, sorry, on less than five acres but greater than one acre would require a special permit process. So if there was a resident in town that wanted to keep a 600-pound meat pig in their backyard, they would have to go through a special permit process if they're on less than five acres. So that does involve a public hearing process and notification to others in a public hearing.
Are there any other? Seeing no, yes.
Linda Doherty, Precinct 3. I'm curious, how would you enforce this? Does this mean that if I want to have chickens, I have to come to the town and get a license for my chickens like I do for my dog? Or would I have to have a license for my pigs? Or, and then does that mean that you come to my house and check and see what I'm doing with my pigs or my cows or whatever the heck I have? I'm just curious how it would be enforced and if it's going to cost people more money to have these animals.
Amy, did you have another thought?
Thank you for your question. So there is an animal permit issued through Department of Public Health that would go towards the keeping of livestock and agricultural animals in town. So that's not a new permit in town. There, like I mentioned in my presentation, there is a state requirement for the inspection of agricultural animals. So that, again, it's a state law. It's a requirement. All that is, is just a census of the animals on your property and to make sure that they're kept in clean and humane conditions because there are zoonotic diseases that can be passed between livestock, agricultural animals, and people, especially if you're raising them for food. There are concerns, like mentioned, of diseases that can transfer between people, their pets themselves, like avian influenza. So again, that's an important state requirement. The town has nothing to do with the requirement of those inspections. The town has nothing to do with the requirement of those inspections. And in regards to the number of animals, and again, our current bylaw doesn't allow for residents if they want six chickens on their property. They may be able to have up to four if they don't have any other animals, but the proposal that we have in front of you tonight does allow for residents to go out and get their six chickens if they have enough. Correct, you would, you would have to let the town know that you have those animals on your property. That is a process, that should be happening now. Barn inspections are currently done every year annually in the fall on properties that have been identified to the town. So if there are residents in town with agricultural animals that haven't been reported to us, they still should be inspected currently.
All right, other? Yes, sir?
Yes. So you're saying the requirement to tell the town isn't a new requirement, it's just written down here, it's already a state law, that these need to be inspected, this is just codifying it in the town's rules to make it clear to people when they move here what they have to do. Is that right?
Correct.
Are there any other? If there's somebody, yes. Yes. We're going to have everybody wear pink or yellow, isn't that sound?
Hi, my name's Russell Talisman, I'm precinct four. And when you were talking about permitting, and all permits have fees, do you know what the requirements are going to be for permitting, or is it going to be case by case? Do you know what the fees are? Is it going to be determining what you're permitting, or is it going to be a set fee? There's still a lot of language in this that a lot of people are confused with. We're going to be wasting time, I'm wondering if we should table this.
That's right, it's not on the amendment. Okay. We're on this amendment. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? We are ready to vote on the amendment. And this is just a simple majority-minority, it's not a two-thirds vote on the amendment. Okay? Lights on. It will change, I've been informed.
Yeah, we called it?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, I see, it failed down the bottom. It did fail. So the amendment failed. All right, are there any other questions on this article? Yes. Mr. Largens.
Daniel Largens, precinct four. Some know me, some do not. I've been living at 39 Perry Place for 54 years. My father grew up there, my mother grew up, my grandmother grew up there. From 1958 till present, we've raised beef cows and chickens. My father did it long before I was little. My father passed away in 98, I took over raising the beef cows and the chickens. I have four and a half acres. The beef cows are for myself, my relatives. According to this new, new rules, according, I should say, according to Mass General Law, I believe it's 40A, because I've been barn inspected for over 10 years, I'm grandfathered in. But now the town says, no. I talked to former Board of Health Andy Pelletier last week, and Andy Pelletier said, oh no, you're grandfathered in. So I took it upon myself to call the USDA, and I have a report from the USDA saying, my property is fantastic, it's well-maintained, the animals are fed, the animals have water. But according to this, I'm not going to have it. And I asked how many other people this is going to affect in town. I was told three, but I could not get the information to go visit the three to see what their input was. Taken my animals to Brenmois School for the kids, so they could see the animals. I've donated eggs to JB School, so the science class could hatch out chickens. There was a nice article written by Dr. Andrea Martin on Telegram and Gazette on April 23rd. I reached out to her, I contacted her. She as well said, this is a very poorly-written agenda. She said she wished she had known ahead of time, because she would have loved to have come to speak to town meeting. It needs to be refined. We had a question and answer a couple weeks ago up at the town hall, which I wish there was more town meeting members there, so this wouldn't last so long tonight. And we were told there was going to be no grandfather clauses. So this is why I took it upon myself to call the USDA and to call Mr. Pelletier, and I've also contacted other animal inspectors from other communities. And they said it needs to be refined. It's not quite there. Heard from Mrs. Ethea, I've heard from the gentleman that wanted the pig, his resident that wanted the pig. Pigs are one of the cleanest animals. Pigs eat in one corner, sleep in another corner, and poop in another corner. They don't mix it up. What they do with their manure, I have no idea. And I do have a copy from the USDA, if anybody would like to read it before they vote for this, but I, I'm pushing for a strong no, because it is poorly-written. Thank you.
Are there any other statements up here?
I was just wondering if someone could respond to that, because I share this concern, but when I saw your presentation, is he grandfathered because of his structure and his, can you just respond to that, please?
Sure, thank you. So as seen in the presentation, animals in structure, in structures have to be viewed differently for grandfathering. There is a lot of leeway to have structures grandfathered, based on how long they've been on the property, where they lawfully constructed, et cetera. For animals, if we're talking about specific animals on a property, there are considerations to have animals grandfathered in as well, that is on a case-by-case basis and a determination made by the zoning enforcement officer. For longstanding properties in town that have had continual farming use on their property for 30-plus years, if that use predates the update to 3914, which was done in 1998 and limits residents to four animals, there may be consideration for grandfathering residents if there has been a continued use that predates that update. So we're not looking to take animals off of people's properties. There are some options for grandfathering on longstanding properties, and if they haven't had animals that long, there is also a special permit process. We're not trying to remove animals from properties, we're trying to give residents options. Unfortunately, we have a lot of properties in town that are not in compliance with our current zoning bylaw, and we're trying to make a framework to make it allowable for more people in town.
Are there any other questions? Carla, who? Ken Frost, somewhere?
Ken Frost, precinct four. Couple of questions. This new bylaw, it allows more animals now than under the current bylaw?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And the second question, with all the changes, policing and inspections and everything, are you going to require additional manpower to accomplish all this?
I can't speak directly to that, but it should be something that the department can handle. Again, inspections are done once a year, so on an annual basis in the fall, so...
So we're not going to see an additional manpower request in the future?
No, because the proposed bylaw is addressing complaints that the town already receives, so we're already responding to this. Animal Control, zoning, boarding, Board of Health, all the town departments mentioned earlier are already spending manpower addressing these concerns. Hopefully, with the passage of a zoning bylaw that puts some framework in place, we might be able to cut down on some of the complaints we get and even spend less manpower if we have clear guidelines to give our residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Don Letson, precinct one. First off, I appreciate all the work that has gone into this article since the fall. I can see you guys have done a lot of work. I will say, and I spoke in the fall as well, my wife and I have both beehives and chickens, and I'll say from a personal standpoint, we're very responsible in the way that we raise our animals. We donate much of our honey and our eggs to charity, and like Mr. Largens, we have a similar example where, or situation where, the way this article is written now, with some of the restrictions that are still in place, even though we raise our animals responsibly and we're very cognizant and aware of our neighbors and we react to any concerns that they may have, and frankly, they don't, they don't have concerns in the way we're set up right now, we still would not abide by some of the restrictions in place, so just wanted to say that and then ask a couple of questions as well. Still a little bit concerned on the grandfathering. I saw what you said, I heard what Mr. Largens said, and I guess that's my first question, is what he said to his grandfathering off the table right now until you have legal counsel weigh in on this.
So we have sought counsel regarding the legality of grandfathering, and as I mentioned in the presentation, there are options for grandfathering. Some of the issues that we're seeing is you can't grandfather what's currently a violation. So if people have more animals than they're supposed to have, it makes it very difficult for the town to grandfather that, because they weren't in compliance to begin with. However, there are some exceptions, because that zoning bylaw that restricts owners to four animals is from 1998. If they have been doing it prior to 1998, there may be grandfathering options, but for residents that maybe have been doing this more recently, within the past several years, or if they might not be able to meet some of the setbacks in here, there is a special permit process.
So that is, that is a possibility, because my concern was more around the setback, not the quantity of animals.
Yep. There is a special permit process that residents can go through if they can't meet the recommendations in here.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bruce Hopper, precinct one. I want to piggyback what he just said. Much better presentation than last time, and I really appreciate it. Just following up on the grandfather provision, I hear you're saying there's a special permit, but I'm not, I don't see it in there now as written for grandfathering.
Thank you. We can't include grandfathering in the bylaw, because it is a determination made by the zoning enforcement officer, so it's not legal wording that we can include in the bylaw. But again, it's a formal process through zoning enforcement where you could get a written determination.
But, but it doesn't, what my point is, the bylaw doesn't provide for that special process. I understand you can't say you're going to give us a grandfather, but the way it's written right now, there is no provision that would allow, like Mr. Letson, to petition for a grandfather or to get a special permit.
So the law already provides for grandfathering options through the process of zoning enforcement. That's why it's not included, because that provision already exists. We're not able to put a blanket grandfathering clause in here, because it's an individual determination made on a case-by-case, case-by-case basis per property.
Okay, thank you.
One of the issues that we came up with, and this is the USDA's report, and I can give it to you, was the footage.
Excuse me, I got to identify yourself.
Danny Largens, precinct four. Was the amount of footage, 10 feet from a property line, 100 feet from a waterway, we're worried about the 100 feet from waterway, but if you walk over to the fire station, you can't even walk over there, because there's so much goose poop over there, but nobody's regulating them geese. So my animals are within 10 feet, and the USDA says it's perfectly fine. There's no erosion, no runoff. So that's another one of the reasons I'm asking for a no.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, somebody's moved the question. All those in favor of moving the question signify by raising their hands. The question, I can vote, by the way, because I'm a town meeting member. Yes, the question is moved. So we are now voting on this, and it is a two-thirds vote. We're holding while the, whatever we do. Okay, closing the voting. Yes, 41, no, 26, of same one. It failed, two-thirds, two-thirds of 67. It failed. It failed, so it has not passed. Thank you. We now go back to where we started, which was, oh, wait a minute, we were going to do 36? Yeah, I got to love 36. Bobby, could we have 36, please?
Article 36, I moved that this article be postponed indefinitely.
Motion to postpone the article indefinitely, is there a second? All those in favor of postponing indefinitely, please raise their hands. It's postponed indefinitely. Thank you. Postponed. All right, so now we're going to go back and with Article 5, and there's a whole bunch of small articles. We have to go to page, I think, 74? Okay, Article 5.
Article 5. I moved at the town meeting vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue to be received during the financial year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, and to issue a note or notes that may be given for a period of less than one year.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on Article 5? Voting is over, and it won 56 to one. Here we go, Article 6.
Article 6. I moved at the town meeting vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit applications for any available state or federal funds, including Department of Elder Affairs Formula Grant Funds, which funds the Board determines to be beneficial to the town, and to authorize the expenditure of any money received as a result of said applications.
Okay. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, seeing none, could we put the voting light on? Thank you. Voting is over, and it won 59 to 0. Won whatever. Article 7.
Article 7, I moved at the town meeting vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction or by sealed build or at assessed value under special circumstances any properties which the town may have acquired or may hereafter acquire through tax title foreclosure proceedings, and to sign, acknowledge, and deliver in the name and under the seal of the town deeds therefore.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we should do a vote. Voting is over. Yes, 60 to 3, it won. Article 8.
Article 8, I moved at the town meeting vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensatory balance agreements during fiscal year 2023 as permitted by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F, or any enabling statute. If voted, this would permit the treasurer to maintain specific sums of money and deposit in banks in return for banking services.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we can vote. Voting is over, 59 to 1. Article 9.
Article 9, I moved at the town meeting vote to establish or renew revolving funds for various town and school programs in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53D, and Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we should be ready to vote. Okay. Okay, I think we can stop here. 59 to 2. Very good. Article 10.
Article 10, I moved at the town meeting vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the period commencing July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023.
Second? Second, yeah, it was a second. There is a second, okay. Any questions? Seeing none, we shall vote. Voting is over. 62 to 1. Article 11.
Article 11, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate from available funds a sum of money, if it becomes available, from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Chapter 90 bond issued proceeds to be used for the repair and maintenance of town roads in conformance with the Massachusetts General Laws.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Oh, one. Now we can vote. Okay. 63 to 0. Article 12.
Article 12, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $100,000 from Medicaid receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2023 to fund supplies and medical, therapeutic and educational services for significantly disabled special needs students, as well as tuition and transportation to and from outside placements or within the district for special needs students.
Okay. A second? Yeah, there are seconds. And now the voting machine is on. Okay, voting is over, and 61 to 1. Article 13.
Article 13, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $14,256.49, which is the interest earned by the Auburn High School Gymnasium Health and Recreational Trust Fund to offset school department costs at Auburn High School in support of community health and recreational activities at Auburn High School Gymnasium and related facilities and equipment.
Is there a second? There is a second. Okay. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. 64 to 0. Passing. Article 14.
Article 14, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $375 from McKinney-Ventoby seats within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2023 to fund transportation for students to and from school who have become homeless during the fiscal year.
Is there a second? I see seconds, yes. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Yeah, I think we can. 58 to 1. Article 15.
Article 15, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $5,946 from foster care transportation receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2023 to fund transportation costs for students to and from school who are residing in foster care placements during the fiscal year.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. 57 to 1. Okay, now, what's coming up are a whole bunch of two-thirds votes because they are referring back to the fourth or fifth article in previous meetings where you have borrowing. And anytime you have borrowing in an article, it's a two-thirds vote. And when you do something with that article, you're going to again have a two-thirds vote. And there's, gosh, there may be like 10 in a row now of two-thirds votes, if not more. Okay, Bobby?
Yep, Article 16. I moved at the town meeting vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article A5 of the Fall Town Meeting, 2019, Packard Chog Uni-Events, account number 302016-581653, as follows. Authorize the balance of $4,647.30 to be used in combination with CIP funds approved at the Fall Town Meeting, 2020, Article Number 6, Packard Chog HVAC Improvements, account number 302020-582153, in the amount of $35,485 towards the emergency boiler replacement at Packard Chog School.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Yeah, voting is over. 57 to nothing. I think we can say it got the two-thirds vote needed. Okay. Article 17.
Article 17, I moved at the town meeting vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article A4 of the May 2017 Town Meeting, building rehab Packard Chog School, account number 302018-581840, as follows. Authorize $33,000, which is a portion of the $60,000 originally allocated for Packard Chog Uni-Events to be used in combination with CIP funds approved at Fall Town Meeting, 2020, Article Number 6, Packard Chog HVAC Improvements, sorry, account number 302020-582153, in the amount of $35,485 towards the emergency boiler replacement at Packard Chog School. This amendment would allow the remaining $27,000 to be used for the Uni-Events at Packard Chog.
Okay. Is there a second? There is a second. You need a hand up again?
No.
Oh, okay. Any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Yes. Voting is over. 60 to 2. That's certainly a two-thirds vote. Article 18.
Article 18, I moved at the town meeting vote to amend the purpose of Article A18 of the May 2019 Town Meeting, account number 302017-581753, from Swanson Oil Tank Removal to Swanson Oil Tank Removal and Conversion to Propane Heating System.
Is there a second? Yes, I see seconds. Okay. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Voting is over. 57 to 2, certainly a two-thirds vote. Article 19.
Article 19, I moved at the town meeting vote to amend the purpose of Article A19 of the May 2019 Town Meeting, account number 302018-581860, from Swanson Oil Tank Removal to Swanson Oil Tank Removal and Conversion to Propane Heating System. Sorry, I thought it was a repeat.
Second? Yeah. Is it okay, Bobby? Are you okay?
I'm okay.
Okay, second. You got the second, yeah? Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Voting is over. 55 to 1. Again, a nice two-thirds. Article 20.
Article 20, I moved at the town meeting vote to amend the purpose of Article A4 of the May 2020 Town Meeting, account number 302020-582060, from Swanson Oil Tank Removal to Swanson Oil Tank Removal and Conversion to Propane Heating System.
Is there a second? Yes. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, let us vote. And voting is over, and 54 to 2. Again, a two-thirds vote. Yes. I'm sorry?
I said, I've seen a lot of people walk out. With these two-thirds votes, do we still have a quorum?
Yeah. Not only do we have a quorum, but it's two-thirds of the people voting. People could be walking out to use the "loo," as they say in England. Okay? Yeah, and we're on a reduced quorum tonight. The Board of Selectmen did that, as we've been doing during the pandemic, to keep people out of the hospital. Okay, 21.
Article 21, I moved at the town meeting vote to amend the purpose of Article A17 of the May 2021 Town Meeting, account number 302020-582061, from Swanson Oil Tank Removal to Swanson Oil Tank Removal and Conversion to Propane Heating System.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Voting is over. 57 to 2. We've basically been running about the same vote on everything. Article 22.
Article 22, I moved at the town meeting vote to amend the purpose of Article A4 of the May 2021 Town Meeting, account number 302020-582061, from Swanson Oil Tank Removal to Swanson Oil Tank Removal and Conversion to Propane Heating System.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Seeing none, let us vote. Fifty-seven to one. Article 23.
Article 23. I move that the town meeting vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article A4 of the May 2017 Town Meeting, Building Rehab Swanson, account number 30218-581841, as follows. Authorize the $66,628.45 originally allocated for window replacement slash HVAC to auditorium to be used for Swanson Oil Tank Removal and Conversion to Propane Heating System.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, Craig. In the reading?
It should be knowing that, oh, that's right here.
Okay. Okay, wait a minute. So this is 23. Three zero two one eight?
Two zero one eight.
It'd be three zero two zero one eight. If we make this operation, then that's going to be the correct.
Okay, so what you're saying is it should be three zero two zero.
Yeah, it's thirty one here.
Right, okay, so.
Mr. Ballin is correct. It should be two zero one eight.
So, why do you amend that?
I believe that would be the appropriate action.
Somebody give me this paper. Right, you're the best. But I will, I will make a motion that we amend the article to change account number 30218 to 302018.
Okay, thank you, Craig. And is there a second on it? Yes. Have there are seconds over here? Okay, so what we have to do is vote on the amendment. And that just takes a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment raise their hand. The amendment has passed. So now that we've amended it, do we have to? Now we have to, I guess we have to take a two-thirds because we've amended it to be correct. So we're, we're taking a two-thirds vote now on, on the, on the article that has been amended. So we're taking a two-thirds vote on the amended Article 23. All those, oh, yeah, right. Yeah, quiet, fine. Voting over. Fifty-eight to one. Very good. All right, Article 24.
Article 24. I move that the town meeting vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article A4 of the May 18 Count Meeting, Building Rehab Central Admin, account number 302019-581962, as follows. Authorize the $30,000 originally allocated for storm windows to be used for Swanson Oil Tank Removal and Conversion to Propane Heating System.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Voting is over. Fifty-eight to two. All right, terrific. Article 25.
Article 25. I move that the Town Meeting vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article A4 of the May 19 Town Meeting, Building Rehab Auburn High School, account number 302020-582051, as follows. Authorize the remaining $8,704.92 to be used for Brenmore Elementary in the final phase of the sprinkler project as required due to the additional modular building.
Is there a second? Okay, are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Voting is over. Sixty-one to zero. Okay. Article 26.
Article 26. I move that the town meeting vote to amend the purpose of Article A4 of the May 20 Town Meeting, Building Rehab Brenmore, from interior door upgrades and asbestos projects to Brenmore for the final phase of the sprinkler project as required due to the additional 25 modular building and for the Brenmore condensate tank for the steam boiler.
Is, is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Lages.
Danny Lages, Precinct 4, to the school superintendent. How much longer are these two schools, Packard Chog and Brenmore, going to hold up? I mean, if we, we get them 335 units of housing down the other end of town, we're already adding modular after modular after modular. Well, we're going to need new schools. Do you have a timeline of how long these schools are going to hold up?
So I don't have a specific timeline on that view this evening, Mr. Lages. But I will tell you, we've only added one modular in the 13 years that I've been here to Brenmore School. We added one at the back. This money is primarily because of that one addition. We had to move to have the building sprinkled. And those costs came in much over what was initially estimated. And so we feel it's imperative and we're required to finish that project and need the funds to do so.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was a, what we're looking at in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Voting is over. Sixty-two to one. And that is the end of that whole list of two-thirds votes. We are now onto Article 27.
Article 27. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate from cable retained earnings to cover unforeseen cost overruns due to the COVID pandemic and resulting supply chain inflation crises, crises in mold and asbestos remediation at Camp Leesum.
Is there a second? There is a second. Is there an, are there any questions? Yes. You did raise your hand, didn't you?
Jeff Levani, Precinct 1. Is there actual number that goes with that? Just a sum of money?
The, the, it wasn't in the warrant article, but as long as it's in the motion, then it's in the motion. That's the $86,000 and change that Bobby read. So that's the correct, whatever that number is, is correct. Anything else? Seeing nothing, let us vote. Voting is over. Oh, fifty-seven to five. Article 28.
Article 28. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $27,000 from the Ambulance Reserve Appropriations Account for the purpose of providing cancer screenings for members of the fire rescue department.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Oh, I did. Finally, okay. Yeah, I think you can shut it off. Okay, voting is over. And fifty-eight to one. I think it won. Yes. Article 29.
Article 29. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate the sum of $75,000. Sorry, $7,500, thank you. From general fund revenues for the purpose of preparing ballot question language in accordance with the adoption of Chapter 53, Section 18B.
Okay, is there a second? I see seconds there, yeah. Are there any questions? I guess not, so let us vote. Yeah. Voting is over. Fifty-nine to one. Article 30, oh, one more two-thirds. This is the last of our two-thirds because we're nearly finished. Article 30 is a two-thirds vote.
Article 30. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $100,000 from the Town of Auburn Stabilization Account for the replacement of the DPW highway roof.
Is there a second? There is a second. Is there, are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. What? Oh, light. Yeah, that makes it, yeah. Okay. Voting is over. Two-thirds needed, let's see what we got. Fifty-nine to zero, I think that's two-thirds. Okay, Article 31.
Article 31. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $182,000 from the Ambulance Reserve Appropriations Account for the purpose of replacing the ambulance EKG monitors and Lucas devices.
Is there a second? There are seconds. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Voting is over. Sixty to nothing. Okay, Article 30. Article 32, right?
Yep.
Article 32.
Article 32. I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the town manager to enter into, into a utility supply contract for a term of up to five years if the market prices are favorable for a term that exceeds three years.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. I think we can turn this off. Voting is over and the vote is sixty-one to zero. Okay? And finally, Article 32, 33.
Article 33. I move that the town meeting vote to approve a revolving account for septic fees to be managed by the Department of Development and Inspection Services. Will involve the collection of all fees or charges related to septic plan design review and inspections. Will be used for the purpose of purchasing or paying for the cost associated with septic plan design review and inspections. Will be restricted to expenditures not to exceed $35,000 annually and will be required to submit an annual report and a budget to the Finance Committee. This resolve, this, sorry, this revolving fund shall commence on July 1, 2020 and shall be in effect in all subsequent years as voted by town meeting. And further, that figure, 1.0 of Section 6.13 of the General Bylaws be amended consistent with this article.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Do I have any questions? Seeing none, let us vote. Voting is over. Sixty to one. And I would now accept the motion to dissolve. Second, second. All those in favor? Hey, thanks, guy. You did a great job. Hey, thanks, guys, you did a great job.